Yeah.
You know that I got one?
Everybody here? Oh, he's coming. Okay, I'll wait a minute.
I gave him my call.
I call to order the meeting of the Antioch Unified School District Board of Education. Can we get the establishment of the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. All right. First thing we have on our agenda is our closed session. So we'll go ahead and enter into closed session. The item is conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, employee organization, Antioch Education Association and California School Employees Association. We'll be back at 7:00 P.M.
We'll go.
All right, I'll recall to open session at 7:11 PM. Happy New Year to everyone and thank you for bearing with us for a few minutes. We'll start with the re-establishment of the quorum.
Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. Moving on to reports from closed session, we have no reportable action. We'll move on to the flag salute. Trustee Lathan, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item 3D, approval of minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of December 13, 2023. If there's any discussion, otherwise I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval?
I'll second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes of the December 13th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion passes. Moving on to item four, superintendent reports.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good evening and Happy New Year. So last week, staff attended the School Services of California workshop on the Governor's January budget. Although his proposed budget was not as austere towards education as a lot of people expected, there is a .76 COLA for next year, which if you do the math for Antioch, we have declining enrollment and a decrease in ADA. That means we may have a negative COLA. Our budget is built on a 4% assumption that that would be the COLA because that's what the Department of Finance recommended. So that will leave us with a structural deficit for the next two years that we'll be dealing with, but we'll talk more when the Governor's May revise comes out. I have on the dais for you a one-pager explaining kind of the Governor's budget. And if you have questions moving forward, I'm happy to either answer them or find the answers for you. We wrapped up our winter concerts, can't say that word, concerts. They were very successful. We had thousands of parents attend them this winter. And I want to especially thank our music teachers for their dedication and just, I mean, that's a lot of work putting those together. And thank you to all the families who came out in inclement weather and supported our children. It was just really wonderful. And we held our final new teacher orientation day and professional development last week, two weeks ago, I'm sorry. And elementary focused on literacy. Middle school's training was on sexual orientation, gender and identity expression. High school focused on content specific, and that was also well received. The window to apply for the state seal of biliteracy has opened. If you know anyone who's interested, please send them to our website. There's a link on there that they can click on and apply. And finally, the equity audits, this is our final, they're finishing up our final schools this week, and we're very much looking forward to their reports, which should be out in about six to eight weeks. And we're going to talk a little bit more in the evening about our ad hoc committee, but we'll digest those in the ad hoc committee and then those members will bring that to the board. So that is my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there any comments or quick questions from my colleagues?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Lathan?
Thank you. Superintendent Anello, there was a tragic accident that happened outside of the school district during the winter break. Were any of those two Were any of those two children our students? Regardless if they were, it was completely sad, but I haven't received any information from the school district of whether or not they were our students.
Yes, one of the students was ours tragically, and we provided grief counseling and other services for the site once we found out.
Okay, can you please email us the information?
Sure.
Like the name of the student, the school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, moving on to item five, school reports, the high school student representative's report.
Oh, there we go. I'd like to welcome up a wonderful gentleman from Deer Valley High School who is going to be sharing some things about what's going on at Deer Valley.
Welcome, whenever you're ready, or?
See, whenever has a copy. Does everyone have a copy?
Coming up.
Good evening, Antioch Unified School District Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Chima Alouel, and I am representing Deer Valley High School as the ASB Vice President. Last semester, our wonderful winter sports began. Boys and girls soccer, along with basketball and wrestling are well underway. Our varsity boys soccer team snapped their losing streak of nearly two years, winning games against both Concord and Vallejo High Schools. Deer Valley leadership hosted a series of immensely successful events, thanks to our wonderful activities director, Mr. Jordan Orozco in the back, along with Veronica McLennan. We hosted our winter ball, our welcome back kickback, and our wonderful homecoming dance. Deer Valley High School will also be hosting the first winter rally on Tuesday, January 31st at 2:30 PM in our gym. It will be a glow-in-the-dark theme rally, and we encourage all of you guys to come as you guys are all invited. Lastly, we will have an upcoming week in February where we will all honor the kids who earned above a 3.0 GPA with gifts such as certificates, cookies, pizza, donuts, and more fun, boba. As for the student achievement portion, we have several kids who have applied for many colleges, such as various UCs and CSUs. I myself have gotten an interview to the Ivy League University of Pennsylvania.
Good for you.
We also have our wonderful college and career, planning an overnight field trip to the Grand Canyon University in Arizona, in which our seniors will explore the campus as well as the college atmosphere if the school board decides to approve the field trip, which I highly recommend that the school board do so. Additionally, we have a new PBIS incentive to attend class on time. Our tardy pop-ups ensure students who attend class on time get real-time awards for their punctuality. Tomorrow is Deer Valley's annual Collect All 15 Day. For those who are unaware of this program, this is a portion of students who successfully completed all A through G CSU slash UC requirements. Tomorrow, students will be receiving a summary report of their A through G completion and their letter buttons as they successfully completed last school year. As for academies, Law Academy has this mock trial competition in full swing in which I am a part of. We have made the playoffs for the last three years, an accomplishment Deer Valley has not done in its 28-year history. Law Academy also has an upcoming trip to San Quentin, in which they will meet with prison staff and officials. Business and tech also has a series of successful competitions, making the state finals in Bakersfield in their business comp. Mr. Freeman also noted that if anyone would like to purchase something from the print shop, contact Joshua Hannah or contact Mr. Freeman, they did something for Live Oak, apparently. I mean, I don't know. I'm just a messenger. Lastly, last but not least, AME has completed successful several performances, plays, and concerts, such as the Macbeth play and the Winter Band Concert. With that, as a politician would say, that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you for listening, and I yield back my time.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Do my colleagues have any comments or anything they want to share about that presentation?
Wow.
Well, it's always so powerful to hear from our young people. And so, you know, providing opportunities for our young people to step into leadership positions. Leadership is not always some grand thing, but it's these series of events and actions that allow us to test ourselves. And so, thank you for stepping up, and thank all the students for stepping up.
I think what I like is that tardy pop-ups. We always worry about attendance. It seems like when the students themselves are taken care of, and I think that's successful for all of us. Thank you.
All right, thank you again for that great presentation. Moving on to item six, public comments, we'll start with item 6A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. We'll start with Marlene Stratton Blomberg.
I can't follow that. Very impressive. I came before you, I'm Marlene.
Can you use the microphone, please? Yeah.
Dear, I'm not, I don't do these things. I'm a classroom teacher. Anyway, teacher voice. I'm retired from the Antioch School District. Anyway, I came here today to invite you to spend some money. I want to hand out these flyers to you. I represent the Delta Kiwanis Club, and we have every year our tri-tip dinner, in which we hopefully raise money. And by raising money, we also give scholarships. And I would hope that you would all attend this event. It's really tasty. But anyway, I just want to invite you to, like I say, spend your money. The money that many, it was, Romano Marquetti was chairman of this for years and years and years, and he was the music teacher in the district, for those of you who don't know. And so, we do try to give music scholarships from this event, if possible. But we do do other classroom support and other things. So we have a very small club, but we're mighty. And can I just pass these out to you?
Yes, please.
Yeah. And I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I add something really quick?
Sure, yes.
So one example of the activities that the Kiwanis Club does is, I believe, three years ago, there was a gardening tower, you know, the towers where they, you know, so that's an example of some of the activities on the back end that the club does in the community, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have Velma Wilson.
Good evening and Happy New Year. First, before we get started, I would be remiss, and I know that some of you know and have heard, the passing of the music teacher from Dallas Ranch Middle School, Mr. Del Carroll. So I'm going to ask if we just take a brief moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Jacob, start my time over.
That's up to the president.
You can just keep going then, if we have some extra time, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, first, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you to everyone that participated and joined and came to the celebration in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. That is our program, Antioch Unified School District's signature program. We didn't partner with anyone, we didn't ask anyone, no one asked us. That is our district event. And I really want to thank those that came out and supported the event. I know there was a couple of other events that the district was asked to partner with, but this was our event, by our students, staff, teachers alike. We were given, and every year we have been given gracious donations from community organizations and sponsors to award our students a part of the art and essay contests. So thank you to the Antioch Community Foundation. Thank you to Republic Services. Thank you to Celebrate Antioch Foundation. Thank you to the Forever Me Foundation. And thank you to the family of the late Reggie Moore. We awarded several student scholarships. Our this year's Reggie Moore Memorial Community Service Award went to Doja Libby's 12th grade student, Matilda McCarthy. From our high school art level, first place went to Aldelia Melgar Portillo, who was a ninth grader at Doja Libby. Second place went to Iris Zhang, a 10th grader at Deer Valley High School. Third place went to Michaela Feliciano, 10th grade from Antioch High School. In SA High School, first place went to Jalen Wilkins, 10th grade, Deer Valley High School. Second place, Daniela Edith, 10th grade, Doja Libby. Third place went to Jayla Falls, 10th grade, Deer Valley High School. In our middle school...
If it's all right with the board, could we do maybe 30 more seconds?
We had one winner, because we only had one participant, and that went to Arabella Clark, 7th grade from Dallas Ranch Middle School. In elementary SA, we had first place, Annabella He, 5th grade, Carmen Dragon. Second place, Aleha Jones from 3rd grade, she was from Carmen Dragon. Third place, Yasenia Gonzalez, 3rd grade, Carmen Dragon. And in elementary art, 1st grade, Avaya Gaitos, 5th grade, Carmen Dragon. Second place, Malena Palumbo, from 5th grade, Carmen Dragon. Third place, Ryu Clark, 5th grade, Carmen Dragon. Thank you to all the participants in this year's art and essay. Be looking forward to the 17th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Art and Essay Contest coming. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Velma, I didn't realize you sang so strongly. At the Martin Luther King Celebration on Saturday night, Clyde was there too. Fantastic. And also, thank you for bringing up Joey. He's my wife's cousin.
Thank you. Moving on, next is Jasper Logobosell. Apologies, Logoboselly, sorry, thank you.
Hi.
Your standing's strong. We're coming together.
Good evening, so we're PTA from Emano Grant. I'll start. So we're here for safety and a couple of other reasons, but during routine visits to Emano Grant, I observed deficiency with access control. After further discussion with other parents and staff on how they had security and safety, we would like to streamline a form of access management during operating hours. We believe these measures will significantly contribute, not only to our students, but staff as well. After further discussion, we concluded with possibly adding a doorbell on our door during school hours, which would allow entry into our school. This was the only feasible concept that we've come up with, besides physically having a guard manning the door. Yeah, that's something that we're interested in, and we would like to possibly move forward.
So the biggest issue is, we don't have a protective line of defense for our office staff and entry into the school. I spoke about this last time with the board meeting. Our school is completely open to the public. Yes, I understand we are a public office and we should have public, we should be open to the public, but there is no line of safety. Someone off the street could walk right in the front door. Unfortunately, the climate with this country and the school shootings are the most horrific things that we face within this nation. Our office has no protection, our office staff doesn't have any protection. You walk in, that's what you're greeted with. I will say it again, open one door, you come right into the school. You can take out the entire office staff within seconds with an AR-15. I am prior military, I know what that looks like. I've used these weapons. That was my job. It's seconds to take out that front staff. I have no idea why we cannot have either a gate that allows them to go through, that is the most expensive thing, or the doors can be locked, the doorbell can be rang, and our staff can open the door. The second thing is our side gates. You cannot come into the school with them, but you can leave out of the school with them. Any child could walk off campus at any time, and no one would know until they are gone. And that's with any probably school, I'm not sure. I don't understand why there's not an immediate alarm that can possibly go off, that would ring for about 30 seconds to alert that door was open. We know one of the doors open goes to our bus inlet and outlet, so it wouldn't be something that would be ringing at that time, but it would be something to alert that those doors are open, and we have three access points to those. We are parents, first of all, and we see the news. We just had another school shooting, just what, this year? So that's our concern.
And I do see the next item on here. Christina Pedraza, so should we just add three more minutes here?
That is me. You got me.
Yeah, so we can just go ahead, restart the timer and add, yeah.
So we talked about that. The second thing, we do have sixth graders at our school, and we do have resource officers that come in but come out. I know our staff has requested a full-time safety officer. We do need this. We do have younger children. We have seen the school work diligently to protect all of our children, and that's not what we're saying, but we do need that extra support to support those older students in our classrooms, in our campuses, and safety. These kids today, there's a whole new vibe, whole new mantra, whole new base of things that are happening with these children today. And the level of aggression or lack of stability that is not happening at that home, it is coming through our schools. It is coming out during those times. We've seen, as parents, this school come into action, but what action at their own safety are they taking? And same thing with the teachers. So we need a full-time resource safety officer that, at our school, that's one of the things we are asking for as well. The, I'm sorry? The last thing is our fence line, our low line, we have a very low-lying fence line in our back, our back area where our blacktop is and our playground area. Unfortunately, we have found drug paraphernalia there, you know, adults having some time smoking in the back area because of fences, and also coyotes have gotten onto the school playground during school time, especially in the mornings because that dust time, and also at night. It gets dark, it was getting dark this winter. Our after-school programs had to bring all the children inside because coyotes have gotten over that fence very easily. We also don't have lighting. There's zero lighting in the back of our school. I don't understand this. No lighting, there's no lighting on our blacktops, there's no lighting in the back, the side door to go out for lunch. Zero lighting. We've asked about solar panels with lighting to provide there and things like that. 4 o'clock, our after-school program is there to 6:00. 3:30, 4 o'clock in the wintertime, you can't see, you can't see anything out there. So we need to have some type of lighting that happens out there for our school safety and things like that. Oh, I got 24 seconds, let's see what I can get on there really quickly. Solar panels, water fountains, I know they're hopefully coming in soon. The kids are bringing in the water fountains, we have 20-plus-year-old water fountains. That is very hard and restrictive for the children to use, so hopefully we will be getting some water fountains that our kids could use with their water bottles for their own health and hygiene and safety. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6P, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees, we have Kim Atkinson.
Hi, first I just want to say this is really difficult, and it might be difficult to hear as well. So, good evening, board members, my name is Kim Atkinson, I'm a purchasing technician with Antioch Unified. I spoke here at a board meeting on September 13th regarding the bullying that is happening to me and my fellow employees. This is being done by the Maintenance and Operations Director, Ken Turnage. After that meeting where I begged for help with the situation, not one administrator from this office called to check on me or to ask what was going on and follow up regarding the plea for help, although I am very grateful that several board members did. Then I filed a formal complaint regarding the bullying, and the findings were that the district did not find... district did not find evidence of bullying. I then appealed that decision and had a meeting with Rob Martinez on December 18th in which I have received no reply. Here is a picture. This is a picture of a desk put on a roof. This is the desk of an employee who was out ill and Mr. Turnage had that desk put on a roof. That is not bullying. This employee was humiliated and this was a joke per the district and acceptable. I then asked months later where I could put my printer? I was told I could put it on that roof. I provided the district with 24 examples with dates and witnesses where the behavior created a hostile work environment for me directly. That does not include the countless examples towards other employees, many of which were taken to HR with zero action. These interactions left me feeling afraid and violated. The definition of hostile work environment is a workplace where the behavior of a manager severely impacts another employee's ability to complete their work. Currently, a doctor has found that I'm not able to work with Ken Turnage as my supervisor and this is the same for two other employees. What is the common denominator here, folks? Days after I spoke in September, Ken was speaking on the phone with an employee on the phone and he told him to hurry up and get to his office. He's going to write him up. When the employee arrived at his office, Ken laughed and said, "I'm not going to write you up, but I haven't had that much fun with my clothes on in a long time." This is just one example of the bullying that he does to his staff. This employee is terrorized daily. After I spoke at the board meeting, an employee sent an email to the superintendent and Rob Martinez stating that the district is refusing to deal with this bullying situation. This employee has now been a target of abuse by Ken and is leaving the district. My heart is broken. The standing up for what is right has come with such a great cost. Ken Turnage has a personal relationship with the superintendent. He calls her mommy in the office. This relationship should not interfere with the immediate action that needs to be taken to protect the employees of this district. I beg you to please help us. Thank you. And this is the picture of the desk.
Thank you. Moving on.
Mr. Seager, can we take a quick, maybe two-minute bio break?
If that's okay with the rest of the board?
Yes.
Great. We'll take a quick, two-minute bio break and we'll come back. Let's go ahead and call five minutes. We'll come back at 7:43 PM. Alright, we'll go ahead and reconvene from that recess. So we'll go ahead and move on to item 7, District Reports, Item A, Bond Measure Update.
Yes, good evening. So Associate Superintendent Robbins could not be here unfortunately this evening, so I'm going to do her presentation. If there's questions that I'm not, unable to answer, we'll be sure to get those to you and the Friday Board. Sure. Alright, as you know, the board has had several presentations on the bond. This is the actual, what is in the information that accompanies the ballot language. I'm not going to read through all of that. I think one of the salient points, so as many of our schools are 60 to 70 years old. And then this is actually our 75-word ballot language. If you've never tried to write ballot language and keep it to 75 words, it's a little more difficult than it looks, but this is actually what will show up on the ballot. Hang on, I'll leave it there for a second. And I'm happy to say there was a, there's a window once you turn in language for a ballot measure in which someone can file an opposing argument. We did not receive any, I'm happy to report.
And that window's closed.
That window has closed. And so again, just for information purposes, mail-in ballots are going to be mailed out, I think, in under two weeks. That's hard to believe. They must be mailed back by the 27th and as you know, the election date is March 5th. And this just kind of says where is some of this money going? And we're going to go a little more in-depth into some of the larger projects that we are proposing. But just because you don't see your school up there listed at the top row, they're down the sides, all schools will benefit from this bond. We heard some safety concerns tonight. That's definitely a high priority for us, shade structures. We've heard when we did community forums, community feedback, we heard a lot about aging restrooms, also the aging, which we heard tonight, water fountains. So every school will receive a benefit from this bond. So here's a couple of the large projects we're looking at. Antioch Middle School, built in 1946, so that is 78 years old. It was the original Antioch High School before Antioch High School was built on 18th Street. And it has some of the largest infrastructure, sorry, the oldest infrastructure in the district. What we are proposing, I don't think this has one of those fancy lights, but is redoing the gym area, which is very, very old. And the entrance to the school is very unappealing and it's sort of the chute that you go down and we've heard from parents that is not inviting and students, so it's going to open up a much more inviting space. We are looking at removing the oldest building in the district, which is known as the 300 Wing. We no longer have plumbing that is operable in that building. The pipes have now disintegrated after 78 years despite many attempts to fix those over the years that really have passed their usable time. So that is Antioch Middle School. It'll also have the commons area and the libraries and that will be upgraded. Classrooms will also be upgraded. So when I talk about these major improvements, it doesn't mean that that's the only thing happening at the school. Fremont Elementary School. Again, Fremont is one of the oldest schools in the district and I want to give you it, I want to say it's two years younger than Antioch Middle School and so that would make it 76 years old. And one of the issues that we have with Fremont Elementary is we've had a number of kids, it is a very narrow street. The school faces currently, I don't know what street that is, sorry. F Street? Thank you so much. It faces F Street and when kids come out, there's no cut-in for the parents here and so kids walk and their parents walk right into traffic and it's caused a number of kids to actually nearly get hit by a car. And we actually did have a student a number of years, a couple of years ago who was hit. Hopefully, they were fine, but it's something we've been looking to address for a while. So this is a major project. Fremont has infrastructure that has reached its lifespan. So we are doing a complete move the school. The entrance of the school will now be, if this is proposed, will now be on 13th Street, which is a much wider street. It will allow for a cutout for drop-off and pickup. And so that, you can see we're looking inside the school and the outs, that's the, 13th Street would be on the other side of that long building to the left of the screen. It would also provide a new library, new admin space, new classrooms. And, okay. John Muir Elementary. John Muir, people consider it one of our newer schools. It is surprisingly 35 years old now. It's hard to believe for some of us who remember when that school was being built. One of the issues with John Muir, and it's a growing school, is if you look on the picture on the left, you can see there's two cutouts for pickup and drop-off. You see the little round half-circle or half-oval? But the kindergarten wing is in the center of the school and we know that especially now we're getting TKs, young as four years old, parents feel more comfortable walking their children to class at that age. And at this point, they have to walk through the school and there really just isn't enough space for all of the TK and K. What we're proposing is if you look on the left-hand side where that, the asphalt is, the black area, you can see a tiny little area where you can get, you can access the school. That would become a gated area, an entrance to what would become a TKK wing, which is on the right there. So all the classrooms would be there, parents would be able to access, go in and out in just that small area. And of course, there would be upgrades to classrooms and other things, irrigation. Orchard Park School. A lot of people said, "Well, wait a minute, Orchard Park is one of the," and I'm putting in air quotes again, newer schools. It's nearly 20 years old already. Orchard Park was originally designed as a K-5 school and then last minute the district decided to make it a K-8 school. So they have no gym, they have no really multipurpose room. Last minute, the multipurpose room was put in. It's a double-wide trailer essentially. And so what's happened there is that they have to have up to five lunches every day. So kids, just to accommodate the kids. So this would give them a new cafeteria and a new gym, as you can see in the drawing there. And Orchard Park School, a lot of this project will be funded using developer fees because there's been a lot of building out in Oakley and we received developer fees for that. So a lot of this will be financed with that money.
Superintendent, just a quick question. On each of the slides where it says improvements may include in the box on the right?
Yes.
On this slide at least, what does the asterisk stand for?
I don't know. I'm really sorry.
Oh, is there a little? There is a, I can't see it.
It's that the improvement is something that's kind of throughout the school and not something that is specific to a specific spot on the campus. So like, for example, lighting is like throughout the whole school, so where would you put the symbol for that? There's not really a good spot to put it. So it's just anything that's going to kind of happen throughout the school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then Park Middle School. Park Middle School is actually 65 years old. And I have to say it's where I started teaching here in the district. It's not one of the more attractive, I'll just say it's schools from the street. It has aged not well, I'll say. Also, you have to enter the campus and pass by classrooms in order to get to the admin building. The admin building is built in the center of the quad, so that poses a risk for individuals coming on the campus. Additionally, if you look on the left where the green, the taller buildings are, that's currently one-story wing. And when they built it, they put in air conditioners on the top, which pose a severe safety risk by today's standards. And so it makes it difficult for our maintenance workers. They have to climb on top of roofs just to fix aging air conditioners. And so when we costed out the cost of air conditioners, replacing those would be 12 million. Our idea, because Park Middle School, it has one of the smallest footprints as far as area, usable space, even though it has a large population, there's just not a lot of areas for physical education, for kids to go out and play, because they still do that in middle school. And so what we're proposing is that building is to build up. And that would get, that would solve the air conditioning issues and they would get new air conditioners. And some of the portables at Park Middle School are very, very old. They have, they are beyond their useful life, so those will be removed, leaving more space for physical education because those classrooms now would be built up. You can see on the right-hand side lower that we are bringing the admin building up front, so it would be gated behind there. Visitors would have to go through the admin building, check in and be let onto the campus. And you can see the new facade as well. And of course, these are all of the other schools. I'm not going to go through every one of them, but a lot of work needs to be done. And we have artist renderings that, of these, that are going up at school. Some might already have gone up the last couple of days, but to just kind of show parents, they'll be along the fence lines for drop-off so parents can see planned improvements and hopefully get excited about those improvements. Alright, I believe that is tonight's presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Yes, trustee like?
Thank you for sharing the information regarding the updates of schools. I haven't seen our continuation schools on there unless I overlooked it. Can you talk about the needs of the continuation school and how this bond measure can support their facilities' needs?
Yes, the bond measure, this also would include our alternative schools as well. I'm not sure why Ms. Robbins didn't have the artist renderings for those schools, but there are planned improvements for those as well.
Can you share, can you get those to us?
Yes, I'll see if she had those completed.
Okay. And then on one of the slides, it says there's $71 million. I think it was the first slide with the chart and I calculated it, it was like 70-something million dollars on the right. And, thank you. Thank you. Yes, right there. Yeah, and it has like HVAC, roof, asphalt, but it doesn't have the, it just says various sites. And I'm wondering, for me, I'm wondering what that is. Like, what is various sites? Like what, can we be more specific? How come we don't have a breakdown like Fremont, Muir, Orchard Park and some of the other schools?
We do have that and I'm happy to share it with the board. This is just a very high-level presentation, but yeah, we do have that and we're happy to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Trustee Lewis?
Yeah, so thank you, trustee, President Hernandez. You know, so first of all, thank you for putting this together. It was apropos that, you know, some of the requests from the MNO Grant Group were identified. You know, I guess my question, you know, anytime that we have a bond measure, you know, there's concern if I'm a taxpaying citizen, which I am, if I'm a homeowner, which I am, anytime we're introducing, you know, additional monies that we have to pay, we want to make sure that we are being good stewards of that money. So, and we may not have an answer to this, but what is the, what efforts will there be to update the community around, you know, as we're, as we're rolling these things out, I'm assuming this is going to pass, that, you know, what? it's going to pass, that, you know, what strategies are we going to implement, maybe this is a question for the board, to make sure the folks are aware of how the money's being spent, and, you know, that we are in line with sort of what we proposed?
Well, we will develop a citizens' bond oversight committee, develop, comprised of citizens. We follow strict accounting guidelines. We will have all of the information on our website, and also share it with school sites so they can share with their PTAs, with their school site councils, and their ELAC, so kind of a trickle-down and out measure.
And so for, for community members who may be interested, maybe in being on that committee or just sort of being around it, how would they go about doing that? Has that been established yet?
Yes, there will be, if the bond passes, there will be an application process. We post that in different publications and also on our website. If you just look under bond and you want to serve on that, and we hope you do, we welcome you.
Thank you.
Great, and kind of, I do have a question following up on that, because I know you said that we'll have these posted on the school sites. What are ways, in addition, that community can maybe share additional insights and thoughts on, you know, ongoing maintenance? Because this is right, just a small portion of the massive needs that our school sites need, and while we are working on this, we're going to need to work on more things soon, and it'd be great to continue that conversation and continue to make sure that we're prioritizing the things that are of greatest concern for the community.
Well, we have been very encouraged and pleased when we put up our Padlet. I think it's a, it's an app QR thing. We got nearly a thousand interactions with it, and we were talking about having one that's ongoing. Like, what are you thinking about your improvements to continue giving us in-time feedback? What do you still see as some needs? So developing that if the bond passes to keep going.
Great. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you so much for that presentation.
Just want to say, what is the process right now? Are we meeting with parents at the different schools yet?
Yes, so every principal has a informational meetings, because we cannot campaign. But they are holding informational meetings with, in the next three weeks, with their PTA, their school site council, their ELAC, and then a general informational meeting for individuals who may not serve on this.
And that information is in the second language?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a way that they can communicate back? Would it be just done at the meetings, or?
There will be surveys done also at some of the meetings, which will collate in both English and Spanish and share.
Okay. I'll just have a comment.
First, Trustee Lewis, and then we'll go to you.
So, you know, more of a comment, you know, I think we should also be thinking about how we, you know, and it's sort of, to period, something that Trustee Hernandez always says, those non-digital natives, you know, how do we include those? Maybe folk, maybe parents who may have reading challenges or, you know, sort of, so we can cast a wider net to include those voices that may traditionally be sort of left out. And obviously, it'll be difficult to capture everybody, but thinking about creative ways for us to, to capture more of a footprint in the community would be helpful.
Yes.
Trustee Latham?
I appreciate all the questions and the responses to Superintendent Anello, and we, as elected officials, can do work around this and should, and so I'm not sure how we can do it, it's such a short time, it's in two weeks, that people will get their ballots. But it just feels like we're asking the district to, you know, we're asking them what they're doing, and a bond, we're the elected officials, so we are the ones that should be out there campaigning, contacting people, putting signs up. And so it just feels kind of one-sided, like we're telling the district, do all this, and they, they're limited. And I know from being a former school employee, there are certain things you can do and certain things you can't do. And so I'm just, I know it's late, we decided to, you know, kind of put this out there, but I, I do want to thank you all and know that I understand the processes. We should be actually doing the campaigning right now.
We would welcome your help. We have a number of call banks by site. If you would like, I can put some of those dates and times, and we would love to have you join us. If you belong to any service organizations, we heard from the Kiwanis tonight, we're happy to, we would love if you would take our presentation in English and Spanish. We have flyers also. As elected officials, I think you're always welcome at those meetings, and I'd like to hear from you, so that would be great.
Thank you. I would be willing to come.
Okay.
Just send me the dates. I heard someone say, like, a town hall meeting could be helpful. It's just something to get folks understanding of what's happening, getting their input, because that is, that's our role as elected officials.
There is one scheduled that I saw, a town hall at Antioch High School. I'll get that date to you also. It would be really wonderful if you could attend that.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the comments from all my colleagues up here. I think it's important, right, that we're working on this trade-off of like these deep needs that are happening at all of our school sites, the wanting to move and make these improvements, whereas also wanting to make sure that we're doing our part to make sure that people know about these things, that we're getting community input, that we're getting information out there to people about this, so that they know come the upcoming election, and that they feel fully informed of their decisions. So, you know, I definitely just want to underscore and continue to emphasize that, like, keep that feedback coming, keep that conversation going. We had a limited timeframe. I wish we had more time to make this feel more so like a community-centered, community-pushed bond measure, but I hope that you're seeing that we really are trying and that we want to keep these conversations going. We want to continue to find ways to meet those needs of the community. Because like we've said, our schools need a lot of work, so this bond measure is not the end-all, be-all of everything that we need to do for our students, for our community, and for our school sites.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to Item 7B, District Financial Audit for the Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2023.
Yes, unfortunately, Associate Superintendent Robbins could not be here this evening. We have, and I don't have the name.
Oh.
We, go ahead, I'll let you introduce yourself, but he will be talking about the annual audit that the district has every year.
Yeah, thanks so much. So I'm Charles Reible, I'm a Senior Manager with Crow LLP, and I appreciate the members of the board for their time this evening to talk a little bit about the audit results. So that's one page, if you want to jump to, oh.
Oh.
There we go. Thanks. I don't know how fast I can get through this all the way. Very fast, apparently. All right, so I like to take it to this page here, because this is sort of a summary of all of the scope that we, as your auditors, are engaged to complete. So there are three general areas that we audit as part of your financial and compliance audit, your financial statements themselves, so the, the financial picture of the district as an overall entity. That's that first bold, bold, all-caps section, financial statements. In addition, because you expend federal grants and entitlements every year in excess of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you're also subject to what's called a federal compliance or uniform guidance audit, which covers compliance and internal controls. And then that's that second section, again, bolded in all caps, federal awards. And then the last section is what's called state awards, and that's because you're government within the state of California, you're subject to compliance requirements and audit requirements as well. So we have a separate compliance audit for the purposes of state compliance. So you'll see, there's a sort of three sections as well identified, which is the, our audit report issued, and that's what we've noticed, noted here as unmodified. That's the highest level of assurance that you're looking to achieve out of an external audit. Unmodified means we didn't have any issues that we need to report that would qualify or have additional explanation in our audit or report or audit opinion. So that's where you want to be as it relates to external audits. And you can also see on the next sections that follow, or the subsections that follow within each area, sort of a yes/no column. And if we had any issues that we needed to elevate, there would be some yeses checked instead of no's. So that's where you want to be as well. So we didn't have any what you call material weaknesses in internal controls, we didn't have any significant deficiencies in internal controls, and that related to both the financial statement audit and that federal compliance audit. I will note that under that federal compliance audit, we follow the federal government's guidelines. They tell us what programs to audit based on how much has been expended, how long they've been, how long it's been since they were last audited, whether they are considered high-risk, quote-unquote, by the federal government. So in this fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, we audited two programs, which is the ESF or ESSER funding that you hear about a lot, and the Title I program this year. So next year, you'll see perhaps different programs get audited depending on, again, when they were audited last, or if the federal government tells us they need to be audited. So I would say, no reportable findings in the financial statement area and in federal compliance. We did have one state compliance finding, which we considered to be not material relative to the district's compliance as an overall opinion unit. And this related to the immunizations program. We had to look at a sample of students who received a vaccination. In that case, there was one student we identified that was not given the vaccination by a certain date. You know, there was efforts made by the district to be able to get that second dose of vaccination, but it's sort of a, it is it or it isn't, and so if it isn't done, then we have to report that as a finding. The total fiscal impact of this is about twenty-thousand dollars, so when you think about the size of the district budget, it's a very minimal impact. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, can I, I mean, Trustee Hernandez, or President? Yeah, so on that point, you know, if the immunizations, obviously, there's sort of a, there's been some conversation over the last couple of years around immunization. So I don't know if you have this at hand, but can we have some clarity around what considerations were made? So for example, some vaccinations, there, there are disallowances or for, you know, religious purposes or things like that, were those taken into account when we're thinking?
Correct, this is excluding those that had an exception for, for those type of situations, so, yeah. If that was the case, and there was a waiver for a religious purpose, then that wouldn't be applicable to the testing.
And so the state defines the waiver, or does the school district define the waiver?
If there was any kind of waiver filed that applies to the state or district requirement, then we would not have to.
Got it.
Look at that.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, so again, that one finding that we identified for state compliance didn't modify our opinion, so you can see on that earlier page that we have under state awards, that's what's called an unmodified, because it was not significant to state compliance to modify our opinion. So overall, you know, we were able to complete the audit on time. The state requires all districts to complete and submit their audit report to the State Controller's Office, California Department of Ed, and the County Office of Education by December fifteenth of the year following your fiscal year, so that was done and on a timely basis. So we're thankful and appreciative of management to be able to get us the information we needed. It was on time, and we were able to make sure that it was accurate to the point where we could submit on time as well. So appreciate very much the fiscal team and everyone else that contributed to the different components of the audit to be able to get it on time and, and give those unmodified opinions. So having other conversations, I'll say, this year with other districts that weren't on time, and so we appreciate that very much in this case. So if there's any other questions on the district audit, I'm happy to address those at this point.
I'll just do one follow-up question on that immunization finding. Was that from a sample or was it from the entire population of kindergarten students?
It's from a sample of, of sites, yeah, so across those that had immunizations filed, yeah, not from.
Got it. Do you know how many, how big that sample was, and are those details within this report?
The, I can provide that population of all the sites and the samples if you like. We can work with the fiscal department. I don't have that handy at this moment, yeah.
Got it, that would be great, thank you. Do any, yes, Trustee Lewis?
So just a simple question. So is this a single, this is an annual audit, correct?
Correct. Every year, the, the education code requires this fiscal year to be audited.
Okay. That's my only question.
Any other questions?
None.
All right, seeing none, thank you so much for your presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to eight hearings. We have none. Item nine, public presentations. We have the project labor agreement. We have a representative from the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council that's going to present information on the district-wide project labor agreements.
All right, good evening. President Hernandez, board members, my name's Eric Haynes. I'm a business representative with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104. We're an affiliate with the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council. Building Trades Council is comprised of about twenty-six skilled craft unions and their members. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the benefit of a PLA. Project labor agreements have been in place in the United States since nineteen-thirties. There's project labor agreements, there's workforce agreements, community workforce agreements, project stabilization agreements, and what they are is a pre-hire agreement. It would be with the school district, this is the awarding body, and any contractor that is looking to perform work, that would be prescribed through the PLA. So there's a negotiation process with the PLA to establish, you know, what is the threshold? We like to start out at a million-dollar threshold. We have some that are five-hundred-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. A district, a different council in Santa Clara County has one that's at the cup-cuff limit, which is, I believe, around, around two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars right now, so that's a pretty low limit. And what you get with the project labor agreement is a guarantee that you're going to have the best workers on a project, building it the right way the first time. Board Member Lewis, you know, you pointed out being responsible with money, how the money is spent. The best way to spend money when you're doing work is to have a project labor agreement with that project. I'll give you a good example as to why. I did compliance for two years on Public Works. Most of the projects that I did compliance on, I did Alameda County all the way to Oregon, including Contra Costa County. Just me as a sheet metal worker, looking into documentation that is provided publicly or that we had to request, I found wage theft of over five-hundred-thousand dollars within a two-year period on school projects. What does that mean to the school district? Doesn't mean a whole lot to the school district, but what that means to the workers is if there's not a PLA, the workers aren't guaranteed that they're going to have representation, and the contractors will manipulate and underpay workers. They'll pay them the wrong rate to do a skilled-trained, a skilled-craft project or scope. The project's still going to cost the same amount of money, whether there's a PLA or not. The difference is, you know that the workers not only are going to be the best-trained workers out there, but there's not going to be any wage theft. Because what happens when there's the wage theft, the project still costs the same, but the contractors are pocketing the money. It's sad. I mean, I, just me, five-hundred-thousand dollars of wage theft. The average wage theft is going to be about twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour. I'll let you do the math, how many hours that is. It's a lot. So the terms, like I said, they are worked out in the negotiation process with staff and with the Building Trades Council. And, you know, one of the other really big benefits is the building trades participate in joint labor management apprenticeship programs. What does that mean? You have the union that represents the apprentices, you have the school that does the training, and you have management. Those are the contractors that are actually employing our members. They all participate together. And the building trades as a whole, across the whole country, we spend billions of dollars every year on education, more than almost every other single educational entity out there. So that just goes back to, you're getting the best-trained workers that you're going to get for your money on the projects. We also have helmets to hard hats. Individuals coming out of the military, or that have already been out of the military, they have a direct entry into the affiliates apprenticeship programs. We're also very diversified. We're about sixty-five to seventy percent diversity in all of the crafts. You don't get that outside of the union crafts. With that, I would like to just leave you, if you have any questions, please ask. If you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you so much for coming here and presenting to us. And I just want to give just a tiny bit of additional context to the board here. Because as we've seen today, we've talked about the bond measure that's coming up, we've talked about the needs of our schools, of our community, and I think all of the, and so, you know, when working together with the district, I thought it was important that we expedite this conversation to, again, show the community that we are trying to be fiscally responsible, that we're trying to take care of the workers of our community, that we're trying to make sure that we're using this money well. I think, you know, to your point, and to trustee Lewis's point, right, when you're making renovations to your household, there's a big difference between hiring, you know, cheap and quick labor and someone who is very well-trained, and those improvements last much longer when we're making sure that we are doing these things. And we've seen that lots of our schools have not been updated for many decades. So we want to make sure that the work that we're doing is quality and going to last because we want to make sure that we're really protecting those investments. Because ultimately, that investment is our students. So I just kind of wanted to bring this forward for us to talk about and kind of start, you know, moving this conversation to make sure that we're being really good stewards of our, of the money that we could be potentially getting and that we are giving back to our community. Because many of the people in our community are union workers, and it ensures that the work that we're doing is coming back to all of us here in the city of Antioch. Without any questions from my colleagues?
You know, I just, not necessarily a question, more of a comment. You know, I'm very familiar with PLAs, and, you know, I know that Director Wisely has mentioned that there's been a couple of different apprenticeship programs that our students are actually involved in. So we're definitely familiar with. Obviously, we can't give leanings one way or the other in terms of what PLAs mean to us, you know, personally or to the group. But, you know, in terms of, or at this point, but in terms of opportunities for the community, I think, you know, there's a lot of interest there. And, you know, anytime we're having conversations around money, I always want to highlight that we are, that, you know, top of mind conversation is how do we be fiscal stewards? It's not always the most, if, the most, the cheapest, but it's also, it's usually the more, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. And I'll stop there. Lost my train of thought.
President.
Yes, vice president Rocha.
We did this with the Antioch High School, with a larger project that we had. We did it, and we were happy and it came out correct. We had a little problem with administration office, but that had nothing to do with you guys. That was something else. So no, we're quite aware of it. Sorry that Tom couldn't make.
I'm not.
But you're a good representative. Thank you.
And I just want to emphasize trustee Lewis's point, right? One of the things we're so proud of in this school district is our CTE program and the work that we do. And I think this is a great extension of integrating our values when it comes to CTE throughout the work that we actually do. So while our students are interested in these things and practicing these apprenticeships, we also have to be modeling that behavior in the way that we take actions as a school district. So we can give direction on next steps that we want to take here if the board is okay with that. I do have a recommendation for, I think, what our next step should be. Because I think the next step is to give the district, the authority, and our superintendent to start, to begin the negotiations of what a project labor agreement could look like, you know, with the understanding that that's going to come back to us, and we still have discussions, and it's not a final approval of that agreement, but to begin that process. And I think there's, you know, a few things that would be great to define at this point to make sure that we streamline that process. Because I think some of the things that school districts around the area and other places have done to ensure that these things are successful are really like four main points that I saw. One, you know, I think that a value of $1 million for projects that should be included in the PLA agreement is a good place for us to direct that. I think that all projects that are qualified should have 100% union workers. I think the most successful ones have terms of five years, and then the really great ones also have a rollover that at the end of those five years, that the contract just continues unless we, as a school district, or the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council has anything that they want to rediscuss, renegotiate, or change, it kind of ensures that we have continuance of that partnership. Is that something that the board would be okay with, to provide that kind of direction?
You know, I'm sorry. I'm very supportive of unions. It's always been in my life and in my family's. I would rather see that we go through with the advertisement of the bond, we get the bond across, and then make those arrangements with the PLA.
I would like to speak.
Yeah.
I think considering just the fact that I'd imagine many of the labor union workers are local residents, probably some of our families, I am in, you know, support of having a labor agreement.
So before we, so I had a question, and it's not necessarily for me, but more for public consumption. When we talk about that million-dollar PLA agreement, can somebody give sort of a, an understanding, sort of a very basic understanding of what that means? You know, so that way the community, the community can understand what it is we're actually talking about. When you say that million-dollar threshold, what does that mean?
So I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we'll let Eric answer that, and then go to superintendent.
So typically, the way that it works is that if a project is $1 million or higher, it would be captured under the project labor agreement. If it's under $1 million, then it would be bid and constructed as normal, as you're doing currently. And the reason that we like that is it doesn't lock small, local businesses from continuing to do work for the school district that they already do.
That's a good point.
And so, and I wanted to highlight that. And so, you know, I am in favor of unions for sure, but I also am, you know, I'm also in favor of small business, you know? So I did want to highlight that point. So that was kind of the root of the question.
Superintendent Nello next, and then we'll go to you, trustee Hack.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful to, because these can be very nuanced, and there's a lot of ways to package project labor agreements. You just mentioned one, there's certainly many others. I'm wondering if a good place for, is to have one of our attorneys come and present the pros and the cons? Because there's a lot of people who say there's our cons. I'm not giving you any opinion here, because it's up to the will of the board. But just as a learning to hear kind of what those pros and cons are, and then to get direction from there, I don't know if the board's open to that.
Trustee Hack.
That's exactly what I was going to say, that we need to have some information about what the district is doing at this moment in time before we're going to start passing new thoughts out there, because they may already exist, or maybe there's clarifications we can have prior to having steps of decisions.
And our next board meeting is before the bond even goes for a vote.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I appreciate labor too. But I just think the details of what the district is doing, we do not know the details at board.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with trustee Hack on that one.
That's, that's what I'm going after too. I, you know, I support the BLA, but I also want to make sure that we get, that threshold I wasn't aware of. I'm not aware, but not certain about where we would go, at what level. So that's important to me, as to what level we would be at.
I appreciate you introducing it and educating us to that point. But I think Stephanie has a good point, that we need to evaluate it further before we make a decision where we want to go.
Got it. So what I'm hearing from the board is then at our next meeting, we'll have a presentation from, from the, a lawyer that will give us more information on this, and at that meeting, we can take action to kind of direct that, you know? And I think, you know, something that you'll learn very quickly about me is that I'm very focused on tangible change for our students, and we know that government moves slow, so I'm always going to push us to move faster and faster. I know we all are in agreement up here when it comes to our support of unions, so that's why I kind of pushed on that. But if that's the will of the board, we can go ahead and take that next step. And at our next meeting, we can put that direction then that I think is necessary.
Thank you.
Sound good? All right. Any final comments, questions? All right. Moving on to item 10, consent items.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes, and yes, thank you so much, Eric, for coming and presenting to us. I know that always a challenge to come to these late meetings, so I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for educating us.
Yes. So president, yes, trustee Lewis? President Hernandez, I always get that. So I can, so I just had a question around item H for consent?
Yes.
And so I don't know if you want to discuss it first, or just get the list and then?
Yeah, we can discuss item H and then pull any other items that the rest of the board may have. So let's start with item H, if you have a comment or a question on that.
Okay. So for this one, it was more, you know, because I know we talk about teacher learning, we talk about those training days and sort of how this would impact the rest of the district. So my question, and we may not have an answer here, you know, there's a request for out-of-state travel for the Marzano Resource Leading Standards-Based Learning Workshop. I think it's in North Carolina. What impact are, what is the presumed impact on the rest of the district for that travel expense?
It's two parts. So we have a new coordinator in Educational Services, and one of her primary functions is to.
Stop. Sorry.
Sorry. Is to support all that we are doing in literacy and catch up on the work that we've done with standards mastery learning. And that is, Marzano is who we started that work with, so we would like, we actually have a credit, so we're only paying for the travel. So the conference has been paid for, and it's to get her up to speed on the work that we've done over the past five years.
And that, those trainings would then be, it would translate to the.
Because she is in a support role for teachers, and lead teachers in particular, and administrators. So this would help better support her in doing that.
Great. Any other questions on that item?
I had the same questions, but yeah, I think you just clarified it. Thank you.
Great. Any, do we need to put that item for a separate vote? No, okay, fine. Any other items that we need to pull and discuss, or?
Item 10A.
Yes.
Who is the subject to service agreement with Lindsay Wildlife Experience on behalf of Encore Homeschool? What's Encore Homeschool?
That's our district homeschool program, and they operate out of prospects.
I've seen it before. I didn't know what the name of it.
So they do bring students in occasionally to experience field trips, and this would be a local field trip for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? Any other items that we need to pull? All right. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I move to approve consent calendar A, or 10A through I.
Second.
All right. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, items A through I, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Consent calendar is passed as presented. Moving on to 11, action items. Item A is job description, bus driver trainee.
Yes. Good evening, board president Hernandez and remaining board members. This item comes from the Classified Personnel Commission. It is, in essence, something that we've been doing, working with bus driver trainees. But we felt that, again, as we've been folding these trainees into the workflow, it's important to have a job description that denotes the expectations, the responsibilities, and whatnot. So the Classified Personnel Commission has put this forward. You, of course, as the board, are able to approve the essential duties of the job. The Personnel Commission then takes it on to identify the remaining characteristics and expectations to hold the job. But these are individuals, we're looking for bus drivers, and we build our own through the trainee program. So we're just looking for your approval to move this forward.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
That's interesting, because I know that bus drivers are so hard for us to receive. And when I read this, I thought, oh, this is how we're doing it. We're just forming them into, acknowledging, giving them the knowledge at the beginning, and then moving them on to become our official bus drivers.
Yes.
Because we do a harder job than even Tri Delta.
Absolutely. And these trainings are provided with in-class learning, and then the actual guidance of our bus driver supervisors to provide training while they're learning the task and the trade.
And it comes on timing, which I was going to ask for, actually, information on transportation in the later subject there for us to ask, because that's coming up. And I know that we're moving in the direction of having full bus system in the future.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Lathan.
Who leads the program? Like, is there a college or a train, like a?
This, this, yeah, great question. This comes directly out of our Transportation Department. We have a Director of Transportation who is well-skilled in all of the parameters of doing this. They work with the California Highway Patrol and the Department of Motor Vehicles in the sense of the training that they'll go through. And we have bus driver supervisors who also provide the training to these individuals. All of our bus drivers have to go through a continuous certification program. So not only do we provide training to new individuals, but it's a continuous review of all of our current drivers to make sure they meet the eligibility and sustain their licenses.
Thank you. And at what point do the trainees transport children, according to the law? Like, what is the law around that?
Right. Not until they've actually passed their certification process before they start working with, you know, conducting and following the routes, and they still have supervision while they're doing that as well.
Okay. Yeah, last question. I know taking those assessments at DMV can start to be costly, and so I wondered, is there, what kind of support can we offer? I don't know if this is something we thought about. I know folks who've gone through these type programs, truck driving programs, and it costs a lot to take all those tests. And typically, you know, these aren't people who are administrators and make six figures. And so is there any consideration for how to support them to pay for all the tests they have to take?
I don't happen to have the ins and outs of the process for our current certification program, but again, we can get that from the Director of Transportation and forward that to you through the Friday letter, I believe.
Because it might be nice to have some kind of scholarship or something to support people to pay for that until they, you know, start getting paid the money.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description for bus driver trainee.
Approval.
I'll second.
All right. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item 11B, public announcement of intent to reappoint Personnel Commissioner.
I'm wondering if I can just, I just, sorry, I looked down, and Liz, our Associate Superintendent, is apparently watching, and she says we do currently pay for testing. That's her belief, so.
She's on vacation, and she's watching this?
The love of the district.
Dedication.
Yes, this particular item does come to us from the Personnel Commission. Again, individuals who serve as the Personnel Commission are on several cycles of approval process. Given the transitions within our Personnel Commission, we got a little bit of a late notice in the needing to reapprove Mr. Tiscarino to the Personnel Commission. You would have normally received information early in October and November. Again, our new Personnel Commissioner was, or Director was just getting going. And so we are bringing this to you to make a public announcement. What happens in the process is that our next meeting, there will be a public hearing, basically, to review that appointment. And then we would ask you after that public hearing to approve Mr. Tiscarino, but publicly, following the Personnel Commission rules. We like to make sure that everybody knows that we want to reappoint him to the next three-year cycle.
Okay.
One of the things I, the privilege you're doing is on Tuesday afternoons, I go to public meetings, and there's only eight or 10 people here, and Mr. Tiscarino is one of the board members who's been there for a long time.
Any other questions or comments? And then we don't have any motion that we need to do, this is just an announcement. Great. Moving on to item 11C.
This is a, that was an action item.
Accept the.
Yeah.
To accept it.
Got it. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the announcement of the intent to reappoint Tony Tiscarino to another three-year term as Personnel Commissioner.
I'll approve it, or make the motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 11C, school accountability report cards.
Okay. So every year before February 1st, our schools, every school has to submit their, all of the data for their school accountability report card. This is a reminder, this is in bold, and much of it is last year's data and information. There is one special note that we wanted to make sure that you're aware of, that CEDE does not have the teacher preparation and placement data tables currently in time for us for the February 1st deadline, but those will be added in as soon as we receive this. I think this has happened before, and we'll update that and get those posted on our website. And so they're here before you this evening for approval.
Is there any comments or questions on this item? Great. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item 11C.
I move approval.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve item 11C. Is there a second?
Second.
The item has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 12 Items for Information, Discussion, and Action by Board. The first item we have is 12A.
Mr. Ferguson, do you mind pulling that up, actually, the narrative? Because it's kind of dense. So we've been on a journey, as you know. The board reached consensus that they wanted to move forward with a board governance model. We did an RFP. Two of the, the board was interested in two of the vendors. We invited them both to do a presentation. At that point, one of the vendors pulled out. The remaining vendor came and did a presentation for the board. I believe either a board member was out. I know I was out that night, ill. But when the, the following meeting, the board took action to select that particular vendor. When I reached out to the vendor, unfortunately, from the time they had done the RFP, until we had reached our decision, their calendar had filled to the point where they could not meet the board's request to have this completed this school year. So before you tonight, I spoke with President Hernandez. We simply need direction from the board, whether or not we want to go out for another RFP, if the board would like to, I just lost my train, I thought it's catchy. If we want to go out for an RFP, if the board would like to postpone this. We do have an election coming up and possibly three new board members. But again, we are just bringing this before you so that we can get consensus from you on how you would like to proceed.
Yeah, does anyone have any thoughts to kind of open up the discussion?
Yeah. So, you know, trustee Lewis. Yeah, sorry. I think my initial question is, you know, how long are we presuming an RFP process would take for us to design the RFP in a way that we would like for us to send it out, have responses? Because I think there's a 90-day or six-month or whatever sort of period that is for folks to apply, and then sort of having them roll out. What do we think that timeframe is?
We can set that timeframe, actually. We don't want it too, too contracted that we don't get submissions, that people don't have time to do it. But we can have a three-week, we could have a one-month opening where the RFP is open. I do think that if the board does choose to go for an RFP based on the discussion of the previous vendors, that it would be helpful, I think, for the board to collectively have an understanding of what they really are looking for. Because I think there may have been some, when I went back and reviewed the meeting, some different understandings of what the goal of that board governance was. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that was my initial question, just to get us sort of started.
And in terms of that, I agree totally. I think the board perhaps might make the decision to get together as a group without an outside person there or entity there, for us to give some directions within ourselves, what we were looking for, before you ask a person to say yes or no, and be approved or rejected.
And do we have somebody that drafts our RFP traditionally? Like, is there sort of legal counsel? Because I know for some of the other places that I, other spheres that I'm in, there's legal counsel that helps with RFPs.
We do. However, I did this pass, this one.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I know, maybe an idea, because I know that we're doing a lot of work around our equity audits, and there might be a good organizational work to do there to maybe connect with that. Because I know that the work that INCAS does also touches on some of the organizational development. So maybe as we're finishing those equity audits, maybe what we want to do with the board governance is look at what those results are telling us, kind of form some goals, maybe with their facilitation, and then see if maybe there is opportunity there with INCAS to also maybe drive some early board governance work, and then kind of move off that. Because I think that's a good place to make sure that we're moving forward and doing work that I think we've all kind of like agreed on at this point. And if we feel that we need to start to reach out to outside and put out another RFP, maybe we can have that as a discussion as we get those results. I don't know what people think about that.
For those people at home, an RFP is a request for proposals. So we essentially say, this is the work that we want to accomplish, and send us your proposals. We'll evaluate them on a set of criteria and move them forward.
Can I say that the last time that we talked about that, we wanted the calendar, the evaluation of ourselves as superintendent, and goals. Those were the ones that I remember we were trying to pull out. It seems to me that if you write the RFP in those, in that direction, you shouldn't have any problem getting somebody.
So I think the idea that you just shared makes sense in terms of the direction we're going, trustee, President Hernandez. When we, so we, the next item on the board agenda is around board committee, so I'm not skipping there, just making a connection before we get there. One of the directions that we took last time, or maybe even actions, was to create, to make sure that we engage in a process where we can deconstruct as the board and understand the results of the equity audits. When we have that information, we can then decide the direction that we go. Like, how do we support the district? What are, what are our goals and our vision? I think that's a good start towards a government, a board governance model. Because even before we can evaluate the superintendent, which trustee Rocha just mentioned, we have to have goals first to do that. Because what are we evaluating on? And so my suggestion or recommendation is to move forward with what we already said in terms of understanding the equity audits. And then from there, we can figure out what goals we want to set, what direction we want to move in as a district, and then the next step. So that's my suggestion. Only because it's taken us a year to get to this conversation again around board governance model. We're not there. So let's start where we are.
Internally.
Yes.
Internally.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Superintendent, when thinking about goal-setting for the district, do you envision the equity audits kind of being a piece of that, of how we, how you set your own goals and how we as a board and as a district set our goals through those equity audits? Or is something like finding someone else to help us set those goals, something that feels more in line with the direction that, you know, I'm just trying to get your input on, where do you stand with that as we discuss what direction we want to move this district?
Well, I think that, you know, this is the year that we revise our LCAP. Our LCAP are the overarching goals. I imagine that the work that the Ad-Hoc Committee does and the results of the equity audits will be, will be reflected in the goals that we pick for the LCAPs. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. So I think that would be the time when the board would weigh in on those. The Ad-Hoc Committee will have informed the board sort of some of the findings. And then if the board has separate goals for their superintendent, you know, it could be like communication or, or something like that, that could be something I, I don't, I think the board could come to consensus about.
Yeah. Do you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay, then, then, yeah, I think, to me, it sounds like, and please let me know if this is not the direction we want ahead, but I think it does make sense then to work with the equity audits that we're doing and work with, and see what the capacity of INCAS is in the formation of some of these goals. Does that sound aligned to our conversation?
I think as a board, we need to, yeah, do exactly what you did, but we need to do that first before we get into coming up with our own document, as long as we're understanding that.
Can you clarify?
If we have an evaluation process or whatever that Stephanie was just mentioning, if we as a group would go through those together and talk about that, and then go to the next step, which is to have our own evaluation of the superintendent.
Yes, yeah, I think I agree with all of those pieces. I think what I'm trying to communicate is, when we're thinking about putting together our goals, I think it's much more powerful to have that rooted in some kind of evidence, in something that we're looking at, in the lived experience of our students. And that's what those equity audits are doing, is looking at the lived experience of our students. So rather than us just kind of thinking about what we think our goal should be, being able to have like a shared understanding of the district and figuring out what kind of information's coming from that to kind of set our goals. I mean, that's kind of the whole reason to do an audit, is to figure out what are the issues that are going on. Otherwise, this is just a nice study that we did that then disappears into the ether. So that's how we kind of continue the work that is, again, based off what our students are doing, what our teachers are doing, what our parents are doing. So definitely completely in agreement with you, trustee Hack, that those things definitely come in line. But where do we even begin to think about our goals? And I think that might be a good place for us to kind of center ourselves and form the goals from those conversations around our equity audits, and then continue on to these next steps of how do we then dovetail that into the goals that the superintendent sets, into the goals that we set, and continue that process. So we have a good shared foundation that really is rooted in the community. Did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, President Hernandez. So it sounds like we're saying, but I want, the reason, I'm asking for clarity because I also want to make sure I acknowledge what trustee Clyde, sorry, my brain now is going.
Don't blame me.
Which is, the board, so are we saying let's table the board governance model until later, and let's stick with doing the equity audit reviews, getting a deeper understanding of those, so that we can start making decisions about the direction we want to go?
That's my understanding.
I would support that. And so the reason is, because we're sort of so far into a sort of an election year, we don't know if folks are going to run, we don't know if they're going to be here, so the makeup of the board will look different. But to trustee Hernandez and trustee Hack's earlier points, when we get that information from the audits, it doesn't matter who's on the board, those goals and those gaps or whatever it sort of comes out of that, those will be consistent. So understanding what those gaps are, and then we can have some initial conversations around what that looks like in terms of developing an RFP. And then as we get closer to that end of the year, or maybe whatever point, sending that RFP out would allow somebody to come in and sort of develop that plan, evaluation, and board governance. So that way, it's, yeah.
Got it. Superintendent Nello, is the, like, discussion of using the equity audits to form these goals part of the scope of the current contract that we have with INCAS? Or do we need to provide direction to kind of explore that and kind of bring that back to us?
I was imagining that, that we would get the information and the recommendations, and that staff would, along with input from the Ad-Hoc Committee, develop those goals, but completely informed by the equity audits. But I think that's work that the Ad-Hoc Committee and staff can do to bring back to the board.
Got it, so that's on-
I want to make sure I understood what you're saying. So yes, the, the district is going to make, we have to do our LCAP, we have to do all of that stuff, and that's going to be included. You're going to, we need to use the data that we have. So it's our S-BAC data, our data from our equity audits, and other, and total type data that we need. So yes, that's there. But I'm thinking of direction. So part of a board, the role of a governance team, a governance group, like a school board, is to set the direction of the district. That is our job. That's why we're elected.
Yes.
It is to set goals, direction, vision. Of course, that's in collaboration with the superintendent, but that is our job. And so I just want to make sure I'm clear, that I'm clear, that we're clear, that when we're talking, when I'm talking about setting goals, I'm talking about what people elected us to do. So we have our equity audits, we see, like, okay, this is what we need to do, this is what we know makes sense, this is, and then we move forward. Is that what you're saying?
Because if, if staff, being informed by the audits and also the Ad-Hoc Committee, will only propose goals, these are only recommendations, that's where the board does their heavy lift, right? They would take those recommendations and really look at them, look at the work of the equity audits and say, yes, these are them, or these are not them. Go back, bring us another recommendation. Or the board might, you know, say, nope, this is the goal, and they could certainly adopt that.
And that's our starting point.
Yes.
As a board, to do action.
Correct, yes.
Which is however long that takes.
Hopefully not.
Well, I'm just-
That long? The goal is, considering the LCAP is due in June, then we have to like start, and INCAS is ready, Superintendent Nello and I, since we talked from the last board meeting, no, because that's the next committee. So should I wait?
Yeah, I think you can give a little bit of context.
Okay. So during the last board meeting, the direction was for the superintendent to go and connect with the National Center for Urban School Transformation. That's a group of, that's the organization that did our equity audits, to see if they had the time, and also get a quote and information. And so we did that. We actually met with Dr. Escobedo, who's the executive director. They do have time. They did submit a draft proposal. And so I'm hoping that you can share what the contents of that is, because if that's the case, then, then us, we just need to, that was what the direction was.
Yes. Thank you.
Got it. So the direction is, well, we'll use all these things to start developing these goals, and we'll work together to make sure that that's brought back for us to have a more robust discussion and make sure that we agree on those goals, and kind of change things as we see fit, using these underlying pieces of data and things that we're working on to make sure that we're rooted in community.
So I imagine that the recommendations would come from the community and staff and their LCAP parent advisory committees. Those would come up through the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Ad-Hoc Committee would then bring it, along with Ed Services, as the draft goals for the rest of the board to consider.
Can you share, and let me first ask President Hernandez, would this be the appropriate time for Superintendent Nello to share the quote from INCAS and kind of their, their thinking around what this could look like for committee? Or is that for the next B?
The issue we're talking about right now, I think we've reached an agreement on, and you're introducing something different, I think. So it'll be the next time around.
Well, we have board committees on the next one. But anyway. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we gave her the directive, and now we're saying, don't say anything, so.
Yeah, we can def, I think we can just, I feel like I have direction from the board, if you're all comfortable, to move on, that we can, you know, just easily move on to board committees, and I can start with sharing the thoughts, if that's what you'd like.
Yes, I think that that makes sense. So we have direction on, on, you know, we are not going for an RFP or pursuing some of the other board governance things that we're doing, and instead choosing to focus on these goals, and then letting that kind of guide our discussion and where we move forward on board governance. And then now, we'll move on to item 12B, where we'll talk about board committees in addition to some of the direction that we gave around the equity audit, Ad-Hoc Committee, and some of the other committees that we have.
So yes, as board member Dr. Jagg shared, we did meet with Dr. Escobedo. We talked about what would that look like to have, to have an Ad-Hoc Committee. At this point, we agree that this should be made up of the two board members, maybe some senior staff, obviously Ms. Varo, who leads the educational program myself, that we would start there, digesting in maybe four to six schools at a time. We would start in March, I believe, is what we said, and we'd get through that pretty quickly. Because as you pointed out, the LCAP, the final, we'll bring that at the beginning of June, but the final adoption would be at the end of June. So we would start that work as soon as we approve the contract next, if you approve the contract, sorry, at the next meeting.
Got it. All right. And then kind of, I'll give a little bit more context around this item, 12 being kind of shape our conversation to make sure that we're focused. This really has two pieces to it. So this is in doing work to kind of build our district organizational culture and make sure that we are providing systems of good governance and good work, and that we're doing work for our students in ways that is gradually building up our strengths as a district. So the, the first piece is, I think, in looking at our board committee's policy, I think right now, it could use some revisions to it to make sure that our committees are a little bit more robust in terms of making sure that we have things such as defining what their goals are, what their task is, because committees are typically formed with a specific purpose. This is that we should do that, but how do we go about doing that? More clearly defines committees within here. I think we often say things like ad hoc, board committees, and things like that, and I think that language could be clearer, as well as having a little bit of more guidance towards committee meeting cadence, and giving some direction on that to make sure that the work is ongoing, and that these committees aren't just kind of existing, and making sure that these committees also understand the ways that they can function within our school districts, such as bringing recommendations to us, and making sure that, that these board committees actually do have all the support and pieces that they need to thrive. So the first thing that I have here is, I'd like to work on revising these policy. I'd welcome if anyone else has interest in joining me on that, or if not, I can also bring back a revised policy with, I think, some additional support here. So that's kind of the first part of the conversation. And then the second part of the conversation is, I think we need to have a discussion overall about what are the committees that we have existing? Is there any gaps that we're looking at, and making sure that we are not spreading ourselves too thin, and making sure that we have the right places filled, so that we[1794.47] too thin and making sure that we have the right places filled so that we can then begin doing that work and start holding ourselves accountable for what we were hoping these committees to do? Because I think it's really easy to just create them and kind of just, they kind of exist in the ether sometimes and we're all very busy people and all doing so much work in different ways and making sure that we're kind of building some structures of accountability here. So I think this is a good place where we have had a lot of agreement on things that we should be done, things that are part of the, that we'd like to grow as the organizational culture of the district. So those are kind of the, the two pieces. So I'll bring it back to the policy piece. Does anyone have any thoughts, questions, discussions, interest in working on that policy?
President Hernan?
Yes.
What, what kind of changes are you thinking about in terms of the policy?
Yeah, so I think, I mentioned some of it as I was introducing right now, such as like, how do we better define and, and kind of create the accountability for committees to set a specific goal that they're hoping to achieve? Can we set maybe some guidelines on how often in the cadences that we expect, you know, committees to strive to meet? And, you know, more language around when we should be closing out these committees? Language around what kind of, what we expect of these committees, like do we expect them to bring multiple recommendations? And then some definitions around, I think committees could also make this a little bit more robust because we also say things like ad hoc and, and board committee and those can sometimes be different things. So I think including that in the policy can kind of help keep things going. So I think we gotta remember to trustee Lewis's point that like, we're the board right now, but you know, in five, 10, 15 years, we'll have other boards and the policies is what we kind of used to understand what we can do, what we're doing, the direction and the values that we have as a school district. So we may, we may up here as the five of us have a, a good understanding of what we think about committees, but it's important to make sure that we define that and put in some practices of accountability to make sure that the work kind of continues and that future boards have some direction to go. And they're always welcome to change policies as well, right, as, as a district evolves and changes. So I think that's kind of some of the, the background of that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Chair.
And then we'll go to.
I just want to figure out, committee wise, we've only had the school and city committee. What other committees are we talking about?
Well, I think, I think, right, that's a perfect example of the kinds of things that can create some kind of confusion around what kinds of committees exist, right? So things like ad hoc committees are typically groups that are a little bit more informal but are directed to facilitate a specific task. Sometimes people can think of them as task forces. So we've talked about things such as having an ad hoc committee on special education and looking at our special education system and bringing back recommendations. We are talking about the equity audit committee, which has a very specific task of looking at the data and bringing back recommendations. And there also exists other committees, such as what you're talking about, the city and school committee, which is a lot more formalized of a committee that, you know, we put out public notices about and kind of making sure that we define those things a lot more clearly in the policy. Because right now those things aren't quite as clearly defined within that policy. So I think there's that piece. And then that can also kind of help also give some direction potentially to our board committees. Because I think as we've seen, we've had some trouble at times with our city and school committee and making sure that we have some kind of shared direction. So when having board policy, we can better define that one of the scopes of these committees is to develop some kind of goals. So, right, an ad hoc committee can have a specific task, but maybe something like that can have annual goals or something like that. And those kinds of direction and things can help make sure that those committees are actually doing work and meeting more regularly and actually leveraging some of the, the connections and relationships and skills that we all have. Because I think there's a lot of, and you know from your experience both on the city and the schools, that there's a lot of great work that could be done there, but there seems to be some kind of disconnect in terms of the direction of that committee and this can help solidify those kinds of things.
Well, we know the reason for that committee not working, but that's beside the point. As to the other committees, I can see, understand having a committee looking at the equity audit, I think that's a very important one. You did mention something about special ed, we did talk about that in the past, and I think Dr. Jagg mentioned that one. So I, I think I'm trying to understand where you're going. I think what you're trying to do is just formulate the requirements or the, and so that when we do go into this, this is the way we're going to do it.
Yes, exactly. Yes, yes, yeah.
All right.
And so, you know, I would tend to agree with that. You know, I do want to caution us though, because if we're, if we're too specific, you know, for example, if we say an ad hoc committee has sort of this structure and it has this meeting cadence and it has this sort of intent, I do want to sort of make sure that we have wiggle room in the policy and the way we're describing that to capture, you know, we may have an ad hoc committee that only meets twice and has a very focused thing. So as we're deforming these, I agree with, I agree with you, but also making sure that we have wiggle room in there for those instances. Because again, there's all, all those outliers, right?
Right. So, so, yeah, no, I, I agree. I think, I think there is, I definitely don't want to be too prescriptive in how that's, but, but like, for example, I think something that could be, I think, pretty well agreed upon up here is like, a committee should give at least an annual update. Because in government, we often create these committees and then they kind of disappear into the ether and like, oh yeah, that committee's actually existed forever and we never actually terminated that idea, we just kind of stopped talking about it and people got busy. So this is a way of creating these accountability structures. So, I mean, obviously, I think in many cases, we'd like to get more reports more frequently, but like even having something, yeah, that broad is starting to kind of set some guardrails to make sure that we're doing our jobs.
Yeah.
Yes, Vice President Lathan. Oh, no, trustee Lathan.
Thank you.
I'm also.
Yes, we all are. I love the idea of just making it more clear, like the expectations. And also if a committee is important, you know, if we all say, yes, we want to create a committee, it should be important to know if we're actually bringing back information. And if it's not, then maybe that we need to rethink the committee or it needs to be something else. And so I agree, and I think it'll help, accountability is big, and I think that's a, it will be a great added component for our district is to really have some strong accountability and that starts with us. If we're going to have committees, have accountability towards them.
So really quickly, so you know, maybe one of the functions of having these committees is they hold one meeting, and, you know, in terms of the policy development. Again, spitballing here just for conversation's sake, the first, that first meeting, they would, that committee would be required to come back to the board the next meeting with the meeting cadence, how long the meeting would last, and what is the intended sort of goals? And then that would determine how often they come back and report out. And I, you know, I think going that route might sort of get to what, what I'm assuming that you're under, that you're, that you're describing.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. So this item right here is just to make sure that we're all in agreement, that we'd like to see some revisions to that, and then we can have a deeper, more robust conversation about those specifics once we have, you know, some revisions that we could kind of start the conversation at. So right, so I'll bring, I, I can bring something back. And again, if anyone has interest in working on this, I'm happy to, to get input and kind of form a team of two to make sure that we're working on this. And if not, we'll bring it back next time and kind of use that just as a basis to make sure we get everyone's input in that. Yes, trustee Lathan?
I don't mind brainstorming with you.
Okay, great, so.
And I'll search for model, model ones.
Got it. Does that, is that okay with everyone, me and trustee Lathan will go ahead and work on this together, bring it back and we can work out the details, you know, take out things we like, don't like, and kind of use that as kind of a basis, beginning of that piece of the conversation. But really the piece is just that we're all in agreement that we want to see a revision on this and then have a bigger discussion on the specifics of that.
Great. And then I also want to remind the board that our next meeting, not to go off our agenda, Dr. Lathan had requested a policy committee. So I don't know if you want to start there or you just want to start here and then move, move that way, but yes.
Yeah, so I think as long as we're all in agreement with that last piece, yeah, the next piece now is, is talking about like, what are the committees that we have existing? Making sure that we're all kind of aware, this is kind of like a, a ground setting conversation to make sure like, these are the committees that we've talked about and kind of created before? Do we see any blind spots? And then we can start to bring those forward in the agenda to make sure that we're then creating those committees if we feel that we need any or if the ones that we have are already kind of enough to, to be working on. But I'll, trustee Lathan, you had beginning thought?
Yeah, my beginning thought is, I feel like the two committees that, so item, I'm going back to item 12B to make sure I'm following. And it says to discuss the current board committees and potential future committees. I think the two committees that we've started are a big deal, special education and the equity audit board committees. And the policy committee, I'm willing to table that for later. If we can just get the, like, update our policy on what board committees are, start these committees as a model and, you know, really discuss how they're working, then move on to another committee would be my idea. So since I brought the policy committee up, I'm, I'm wanting to just pull that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Great. And I can kind of do some level setting here then. So this is my understanding of the committees that we've talked about and kind of either established or in the process of kind of establishing. So we have that special education committee, the equity audit committee, the city and schools committee, and then we also had the trauma and grief response committee. And I think that's an example that'll take full accountability for, that we kind of haven't moved forward with me and trustee Hack, and that's exactly, I think, some of the impetus of making sure that we're following through on those pieces and then giving it, you know, the work that we set out to do. So I think, I still think it's an important committee to have and I think there's still work and discussions to do there. So am I missing any committees that we've talked about or any spaces that maybe you'd like to see? To me, I think this feels like a good set of starting committees to work on. I think, you know, acknowledging that we are all very busy people and hoping to accomplish a lot. I think this is still a very ambitious set of committees that exist, but would love to hear from the rest of the board.
So why don't you start the committee, the two of you, come up with two areas that you want to bring back to the board at the next time? I mean, you got four or five selections, but that's too many, I think, to be effective by the next board meeting. So choose two and come up with some details and give it to us and we can discuss that in more detail.
Well, there's really only three that are kind of extra in addition to the work that we do, so I think, I think.
That's fine.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate, you know, being, wanting to be cautious about, you know, not stretching ourselves too thin. I agree with that. Because, right, because we, the city and schools is a, is a committee that we have and, and will continue to have. And then the three that we've kind of formed together or started to form is a special education, equity audit, and then the trauma and grief response. So there's really only three there. But I think to your point, I wonder if the rest of the board, do you feel that's a good starting point or is there anything that is just so critical for us to also consider at the moment?
I think that's a good starting point.
It seems to me that the equity, it would be very interesting since that is right now, it's being done. School and city is not going to be resolved because we don't have that set up. And it was originally for crossing guards, it was originally to try to have the city help us pay for it, and that never came to be. And the structure's not there for us to even continue. So I would think you'd want to drop that one for now.
When you say drop, what do you mean?
Mean, hold it for a later time.
So you mean to prioritize having a conversation around the other three?
Yeah. To me, the equity is very important and the, because we're doing it now. And it seems that that report needs to come back, that was set your goals, and then we could go forward.
Yeah, I think, so the, the discussion is whether we like these and then I can work with the superintendent to make sure that we're bringing back these discussions and making sure that we're shaping the organization behind these and making sure that my role, right, as the board president, is to make sure that we're kind of continuing on and moving. And so I just wanted to get a landscape of that and then we can kind of make sure that I have conversations with the superintendent to make sure that these things are kind of moving forward a little bit as we kind of develop, again, with the board policy, a more concrete way of organizing these committees. And I appreciate your, your thoughts on the city and schools committee. I'm a little bit more optimistic in that we can continue to form and develop this committee to accomplish some really great things. I know that we have had trouble before, but I think we need to always try. And I think there just is no way that we fully encompass what it means to be a student in the school district without leveraging all of the pieces of government. It's hard, there are frictions and sometimes there are personal frictions, but I think we have the capacity to work through those and make sure that we're putting our students first. Because again, that's really the, the center there. And, you know, thinking about, you know, not to go off too far of a tangent, but when thinking about the capacity building of an organization, you know, so many of our administrators, our teachers, and, and so many people are doing so much that there's not much more we can really ask of them. And so when we create these partnerships, I think there is more we can ask of the city and also give to the city to make sure that both of our work is more robust. So, so I definitely, yeah, acknowledge that there may be some frictions there, but I think we should give it a good old try before we kind of move back on that. So that can be maybe part of a deeper discussion we have in the future as long as at least a majority of the board here feels that we should try to, to, to continue with that committee and find ways to make it work.
I think, like I said, originally it was for the transportation issue. And we do have, continue to have transportation issue over at, I mean, excuse me, Fremont, because of the layout, and now we're talking about the bond issue that might help. But I think at this point, I would rather see that we hold off delay, wait some time on the school and city and, and develop more time on the equity.
And what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm always sort of prioritization, because again, I don't, like, if you look at any healthy city, well, actually, not even any healthy city, if you look at logic, students are students, but then they also graduate and become citizens of a city. So it's not necessarily that city and schools are separate entities, we are preparing folks to become citizens in this community. So having that relationship is key, but in terms of what I'm understanding trustee Rocha to say, be saying is.
Just to delay it for a while.
Well, yes, and prioritizing those other two so that way we can get those goals set. So that's what I'm understanding her to be saying.
Yeah.
Not to eliminate it.
Yeah, and I don't think we're setting right now priorities, just kind of acknowledging, again, the subset of committees and then I can work with the superintendent to make sure that, that we're, because I agree, right, the priority is probably our equity audits, special education, but we can kind of have those discussions to make sure that the work is coming back to us at a good, manageable way. Because you write, so some people here feel that maybe city schools is less of a priority, but I think that's a conversation we could kind of work on as we go along. So I think I'm seeing at least the majority consensus on these four committees. And then I'll work with the superintendent to make sure that we're moving these discussions forward as they come along on the agenda, as again, we're putting together this policy committee. Does that sound good with everyone?
Yeah, I don't want to throw a wrench in it, that was beautifully stated, but at some point I would like the board to think about, and I don't mean tonight, developing a political advocacy committee, because I do think there are issues that are above a superintendent for elected officials to deal with other elected officials. We're often in the, we're often reacting. But there's a way I think we can better influence legislation and other, and other policies that are affecting us.
I agree, and I think, I'm sorry.
No, yes.
I agree, because I think at this point, when there's a change going on into our higher, should I say, people that are in charge? I don't know how to say this, superintendent, well, should I say?
Influencer.
Influencer, supervisors, congressmen and all that. There is a change going on. And CSBA is constantly telling us to be more visible, more involved, give our story, because how are they going to know how to support us if they don't know what our story is? So I agree with you. And it's a good timing now to be looking at that direction. In fact, in March, we'll have the legislative connection. And again, you have to do it, we're doing it by the, the computer. We can't go to Sacramento like we used to go. So, it's an important one.
Yeah, and I, I apologize superintendent, I know we did discuss that and I realized that that, that slipped my mind. So I, I think, yeah, I, I agree that, right, we're often aiming our discussions just centered within this district, but we're not just subject to the forces within this district like we saw with the city schools committee. And we exist within a number of systems that we should also be trying to influence, the money that we get from the state often decides the way that we're able to allocate different budget things. And so I think we do have a role to play there. So I guess, and, and I should have said this better in this way, but I think part of the other goal that I have as we're kind of organizing these committees is, once we get these on like a good cadence, we know the organization, I think we may find that we do have some more capacity to maybe take on another committee. So I think, you know, I think that's a perfect direction for maybe, once we get these ones going, that should be probably our next priority of thinking through, how do we start to create some advocacy to move the systems that surround the school district? Because again, right, we're already, teachers, staff, so many things are already at capacity, but when we go outside of our current systems, that's where there's capacity building that exists.
Absolutely. 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 Yes. I'm going to stop because it'll open the other conversation. So next.
Yeah. So I think we're good. And then I'll take note that I think there's a general sense that advocacy may be the next thing that we want to look at. Great. All right. So yeah, so we'll, we'll continue this conversation, right? We're not going to have everything fully in place in one conversation. But I think that gives the superintendent and I a good enough direction to bring some more discussions back for us to, to start to consider and move things forward. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I appreciate the direction. Thank you. I look forward to working on that.
I just want to say one more word.
Yes, trustee Lewis.
Which is infrastructure. I feel like part of the reason why there may be a struggle to get our committees up and running and sustainable and all is like, we don't have a strong infrastructure. So I think the policy, the updated policy on board committees needs to include the infrastructure.
Yeah, and that, that, exactly. That's, that's exactly what that policy is trying to build is, you know, all the structures and infrastructure in place to make sure that these committees are successful. Great. Moving on to item 13, resolutions for first reading, we have none. Item 14, resolutions for immediate action, we have resolution 2023, 2435, authorizing provisional internship permit.
Yes, as you just said, this would allow two individuals to hold new credentials into the provisional internship permit while they're became, becoming fully credentialed. So we just seek your approval on that.
Great. Is there a-
Make a motion to approve.
I was going to ask a question.
So there's a motion on the table. Do we have a second, and then we can have discussion? And then there's a second by vice president Rocha, and now we can have discussion. Trustee Lewis?
It was just the same comment that I always make, to ensure that it's in line with the credential area that they are trained in.
These are new individuals to the district, so they're obtaining a special education credential, and the other one has a multiple subject credential. So they have demonstrated sub-subject competency in those areas. So yes, they're authorized to do that under the waiver process. And so that's what we're seeking.
Great. And seeing no further discussion, I, all in favor of approving item 14A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 15, resolutions for second reading and action, there are none. Moving on to item 16, board policies for first reading, there's revised board policy 4112.2 certification.
And again, just, this just information. It's really more of a wording update, including the word competency for something that we just approved, which is the provisional internship permits and the process by which CTC, the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, authorizes the district to authorize individuals to be within the classroom.
Great. Any questions on that at the moment? All right. We'll see that come back to us. Moving on to item 17, board policies for first reading and immediate action, we have revised board policy 1325, advertising and promotion.
And that is mine. So we are asking the board to review and approve this, this evening. It is really to update our practices that promote positive relationships with community organizations. We have a number of people that are wanting to provide donations, in this particular case, for our sport, our athletic programs. And we just don't have a policy that allows us to do that at this time. So we are updating this policy so that we can be consistent in welcoming of this, these generous offers.
And when we say donations, they are also asking that we advertise. So on a scoreboard or something, Sutter Health is one, I believe, that's interested, that would appear. We'd obviously develop some criteria for that.
And if you come Friday to the base, I mean, soft, excuse me, basketball game for the girls who are winning right now, you'll see it. You'll see the sign.
Great. Any other discussion on this item?
A move approval?
Second.
All right. The item has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 18, board policies for second reading and action, we have revised board policy 5131.7, weapons and dangerous instruments.
So we are asking the board to adopt this revised policy. It was supposed to come on the last board agenda, but it was inadvertently left off. You have the AR in front of you, so now is the board policy that requires approval.
Great. Is there any discussion on this item? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. The item has been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor of approving item 18A as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Item 19, information, items for general information, we have item A, new administrative rule, 4161.8, 4261.8, 4361.8, family care and medical leave.
And again, this is just information for you. It is an administrative rule that basically outlines the parameters for a family medical leave act and the California Family Rights Act. So it makes it specific to both our administrators, our certificated employees, and our classified employees and the parameters with which they are entitled to have those leaves. So it's the specifics of how we would implement those leaves.
Great. Is there any discussion questions on that?
Move approval.
Just for information.
Oh, excuse me. I looked at it wrong.
Great. All right. Moving on, item 19B, the quarterly report on Williams uniform complaints.
Yes. And this is just for the quarter of October through December 2023, and there were no complaints received during that period. Again, for your information.
Great. Any discussion questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to item 20, future agenda items from board members. So we'll go ahead and start at my far left. Trustee Lewis?
So the only item that I want to bring back, I know it's on the Friday board, but I do want to have sort of a deep conversation, intentional conversation about hiring a grant writer. So if we can get that one, that's it.
Great. Vice president Rocha?
I made it earlier, I think, the request for the transportation. I just wanted to know where we are, especially with the electric, electric buses and the issues they have, plus the grants that have been coming by.
Great. And if you have any more details, I got electric buses and grants as something in particular, but yeah, general update. If you have any more specifics, feel free to send that to the superintendent and I.
So I know, sorry, I know that there's been updates, I think, two months ago for the JRF ROTC. So if we can get an update around that as well.
Great. Trustee Lathan?
Sback assessment results for 2023. The new ones are out, and so it'd be great to have a presentation on the results. I know that would also help with the, as we're dissecting equity audits, update on the anti-bias grant.
I'm sorry, can you repeat one more time the first one to make sure I capture?
Yes, Sback assessment results, so the test results for students.
Great.
Anti-bias grant update is the same as December, when I asked. And communication practices between the superintendent and the board.
And then trustee Hack?
Pass.
Great. And then I'll work with the superintendent as we set the agenda. Anything that I have will make its way at the appropriate time. Great. So moving on to item 21, additional comments which exceeded the first 30-minute session limit, we have none. Moving on to 22, reports and comments from board members, we'll go ahead and start from my other side, starting with trustee Hack.
Okay. Martin Luther King, Clyde was there in his all his splendor, and Vermeat, and Bill, of course, sang, and which is, she, she really sings very nicely. She does. District Digest, the first copy I got, 75 pages or whatever it was, it was very nice. It's very informative. That's a good word. Music, yeah. The concerts. We've already had a couple of Deer Valley. We're having one this coming Friday. It always fascinates me halfway through the school year, these kids all know how to play so well, and everybody knows each other very much. And what else was it? Personnel commission meetings, which we talked about that earlier, but yeah, they come there on Tuesdays at eight, at four o'clock. That's it.
Trustee Lathan?
I've visited several schools before the end of this, the year. Antioch Middle School, Jack London Elementary, and Lone Tree were the last ones that I've visited in November, December. And just some highlights of Antioch Middle School, the focus this year is on instructional practices, mastery learning and grading for equity. I look forward to having a new, newer facility for Antioch Middle School. But in the meantime, principal Douglas and teachers are really working hard to do the best they can in the facility. Jack London Elementary, walked the school, a parent, principal Dr. Sarah Wrote, and reading instruction in ELA. She created a school-wide literacy block. It was evident when I walked the school, I believe that was the same school, the other principal who had, who focused on literacy, was that her school?
Turner.
Turner. Oh, was that Turner? And she hired a part-time reading teacher, and they're focused on vocabulary. So these are things that I saw throughout the school, but also that she told me that she was really working on. And finally, Lone Tree Elementary School, I walked the school with principal Johnny Stillman. And the focus this year is to ensure students, that ensure that students are first, of course. And she really is focusing on a safe and loving environment, improving communication across the school, focus on ELA and some other areas. So just shout out to those school sites for welcoming me and taking me to see some, you know, teaching and learning, the school climate and culture.
Great. Thank you. Vice president Rocha?
You know, I, I want to thank, actually, I had this tour that I went to of the food services. It was amazing, a huge building Clyde went with. But I want to thank Stephanie Simmering, I hope that's the correct way, director of food service, who did the, the tour for us. And then we, we met some of the top people. Catherine Kachoa was manager of the central kitchen. I found out she was a chef, and she was, had her own TV productions over in Philippines. So we have a top person in the food department there, overall, our whole school, and Liza Sonar, our supervisor for the area there. But the joint application we hear here on paper, actually, I saw it in action, because by having that joint operation with the other school districts, we get a better price. And she showed a package of strawberries for only $2. You realize that is expensive thing. But it just depends on how they manage their food and all, and how they have to adjust their food according to what the students really want. It's, it's interesting. And they have to feed all the students regardless of who they are. We saw in action a parfait, oh my God, it looks so good. And the spaghetti sauce, these big old things that she was cooking that spaghetti sauce, and the machinery that they have to have in order to do that has to be specialized so they can cook and pour it, so they're not doing it themselves. And then the peanut butter, I don't know if you know this, but they don't have peanut butter, you know, but they have to have something that tastes like peanut butter. And it was a sunflower. I've never had sunflower peanut butter, and it was delicious. And then I, I asked him, well, how do they know what the students really want? And she says, we do surveys with the students. We find out right now, we're going to do these, my interest foregoing was because I can't figure out why our students are not eating like they should, you know what I mean? But they're so busy talking, they don't want to eat. So you have to provide something fast. So right now, they're talking about putting the caves that they call it Antiochai. They already have the two sets at, at Deer Valley, and they're trying to put a production where it's fast, where you just come and grab it, because that's what you have to do with these students sometimes. And then their large equipments, they have these big freezers and these big, oh my God, these heaters. And what was interesting is they reduced their, their time with employees for fixing those, because the heaters, the freezer, freezers go up and down sometimes. And instead of calling somebody in, all they do is look at their watch. The watch does it. I mean, you know, sometimes it's amazing what, what this whole thing has done to change the system, and you have to go along. So I'm just saying, you know, especially to that team, they know, and they were working fast. The lady that was doing the pizzas was just running around. You, you, she was just throwing them out and doing them. And they have to, because they have so many they have to feed. From there, they take the requests from the school, and they have it set up so that all the trays are set up for that particular school, and it goes out to them daily. And they, that's because the school itself has the menu already and has had that time with them to know what they have to bring in. Anyway, I'm amazed. I just had to give you that spill, because you need to go and see it, because it's, it's information. Okay. The next thing, when we talk about this bond, and I know that we can't officially do anything about there, I particularly, I'm going to be volunteering at March, because I mean, excuse me, at Fremont, because I can speak a second language. You might be interested in that, because you take the phone home and you start calling parents. The second thing is that they're having, the women's club is having a meeting on the first. I would like to have some flyers for my members there, at least 50. And I'm thinking that we could hit Kewanas. I mean, I think any one of us that has a membership with any one of the outside clubs needs to do that now, because March is just around the corner, and February meetings start coming up. Rotary is an example. They're there every noon, but not every club meets on a weekly basis. They're sometimes just meet on a monthly basis. Anyway, that's it. And come Friday to the game. Basketball, right now, is tops. The girls are on the top.
Yeah. And so if I'm understanding the last piece, you want to fly from the district about the bond, so that way we can share it in the community?
Yeah. Something that we could hand out, and similar to these, I don't know, you'll know what to do. Simple.
Yeah. So, thank you. I did sort of, I've actually forgotten that we did the school cafeteria tour, or the school food, I don't know what to call it, food services tour. I did have to cut my, my time short, because I had a, I got called to work. My schedule and my phone never stops. But while I was there, it was amazing. And, you know, as I'm walking through those, I'm always thinking about ways that we could involve our students, because thinking back, you know, again, I always say that I was a first gen student, and sort of figuring out what I wanted to do in life was something that I didn't figure out until tomorrow. I'm still figuring it out. I'm going to figure it out when I grow up. But if we can provide these opportunities for kiddos to get involved, right, so some of that production, some of those activities for the kiddos to get involved, maybe that's something we can think about exploring. And so I believe it was in December, we had a school site council. I'm on the school site, I'm still on the school site council for Lone Tree Elementary. And we sort of went through some of the goals there and determined how money would be spent. You know, we worked with principal Johnny, and, you know, the team there, the great team. Ms. Ms. Jamie was there, well, yeah, Ms. Jamie was there, she just left. And then lastly, there were a number of MLK events. I spoke at, I don't know, like four. And so we give presentations, and we do all these things, and, and we celebrate his life, but we also want to make sure that the community understand what his actual messages was, because the I Have a Dream speech was one of a subset of a number of different things. He was also very adamant about creating opportunities, from what I understand, of bringing people together to have conversations around resolving conflict and actually moving forward. Because again, you know, if you want to go fast, there's an old African proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. And that's kind of what I understand MLK to be embodying. So when we, when I was speaking at these events, that's kind of some of the poems that we shared and, and all those different things. So that's it.
Great. And then I'll just keep my comments focused on a few things. So I do want to share that I'll be doing a tour of all of our schools. My goal is to get to all of our school site programs by the end of this school year. So I particularly would appreciate, you know, if any community members have thoughts on things at different school sites that are worth celebrating, worth looking at. I know we had parents from MNO Grant that I think highlighted some places that I think would be great to look at as I start to organize these different school visits that are coming up. So I just wanted to say that to both get community input and to hold myself accountable that, that I did, I am setting out to do this. And then I kind of want to focus in on an event I went to in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. It was an event in partnership with Moms Demand Action and Soulbox, which is looking to recognize the crisis of gun violence that occurs in the United States. So at these events, we created these origami boxes that represent an individual who lost their lives or has been affected by gun violence. And I think one of the reflections I had in the event is just how prevalent and normalized this can often feel. It was, my first inclination was not to think about, oh, well, how has my life been impacted by gun violence? I initially just thought, well, you know, you know, this is an issue in the country and in the community, but I hadn't sat down and reflected on just how pervasive it was, it's been in my own life in ways that I haven't taken time to reflect on. So in the way that it affects so many people, in the way that this really is a through line through all the work and through discussions that we, we had today. So, you know, I thought about the different trajectories that my life could have taken in different ways. When my family first moved here to Antioch, we lived at an apartment not too far from Antioch High School, Antioch Middle School. And we moved because my mom witnessed gun violence. She saw someone pull out a gun and start firing and felt that that wasn't safe. And so we moved somewhere else. And I never thought about how where I live could be what affected me. And even up until recently, you know, I've shared that, that we moved not too long ago, but previously in the apartment complex that I lived, gun violence was really a reoccurring thing that I never just sat to truly recognize. One of the, my neighbors in the apartment was shot and killed. We've had, there's a, a home that's right behind where our apartment was, where there was police shootouts that happened. There have been bullets that have flown through that apartment complex. And, you know, growing up young, I just felt like, oh, this is just kind of like a thing that happens. happens and that I didn't sit to recognize about. And even thinking about that this has happened to people that I know, I went to Dozer Libby Medical High School, and one of the graduates from the class of 2012, Jabrill Abubukar, was killed through gun violence, one of our own students, and so many of our students suffer from gun violence. And we think sometimes that this just harms that individual, but it reverberates so far. It's something that I think all of my classmates talk about, that people that were in lower grades talk about, that people at other schools talk about. So when these instances of gun violence happen, it really does reverberate throughout the entire community, and you can see the way that that touches on our work as we're creating committees that touch on trauma and grief response, as we think about how we're communicating as a board and as a district as these tragedies occur, as we're thinking about our equity audits, and what kinds of things can we do to improve the culture and address these kinds of things that are going on. We have had parents come here and talk about concerns about safety. So these things are just so pervasive, and it sometimes takes the reflection to realize just how far and wide it really does spread. So that was like something that I've just been reflecting on, and it's so easy to think about the different things that we talk about here as being disconnected, but when I think about, you know, something that people can see as boring or tedious or in the weeds when we talk about committees, when we talk about board policy, these things come back in the way that we organize our school district, in the way that we're able to respond to things, in the way that we shape our values. So for me, when we're going through these things, I think about these very real things that are the stories that tend to pull at our heartstrings. And I think it touches very well on the book that I brought today to share. It's called Our Pool by Lucy Ruth Cummins, and it's a story about a community that really comes together to welcome all kinds of people into one pool that they share, people with different body sizes, different ethnicities, different races, genders, all sorts of different things, and everyone comes together in that shared pool. And to bring it back to this idea of gun violence, when something tragic happens in our community, our community is our pool, in the same way that a pool, when something, you know, when it's dirtied, when something happens to that pool, it affects everyone that is in that pool. And so when something happens in our community, it affects every single one of us, because we exist within that pool. And so I think this book highlighted that so well, and connects back to the work that we do as a school board, that, you know, we are trying to create a great pool for everyone, and we're working together, we're both trying to make this pool a great place, but we're also all in it and trying to make it this great environment. And so I think this is just such a great way to highlight the way that we're all connected and to really under, to emphasize some of my hopes and dreams as we start this school year, and how I hope to lead this school district as board president, is making sure that we think about all of us together, working together, and creating a better community for each other. So on that note, we'll move on to item 23, future meetings. Our next meetings are February 14th and March 13th, and then moving on to our final item, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment?
Second.
The item has been properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.